Morning, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Um, we need approval of the tentative agenda, please.
I'll make motion to approve the tentative agenda.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Would you please read the minutes from the previous meeting?
November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, Chairman Rassinsen called the regular meeting of the regular board to your supervisor's support at the end. Members present for clues, Bosch, Rassinsen, Luke, and Ellis. Motion by Cluse and second by Bosch to approve this initiative. Motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and special meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five were written and approved plans for payment. Motion by Rassinsen and second by Bosch to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one for the certification of the first year city school election results by roll call votes. Ayes, Cluse, Bosch, Rassinsen, Luke, and Ellis, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one duly passes and reads as follows. And there shows all of our election results in our county and um enjoy or for our people family. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to approve resolution forty twenty-five. For the presentation of second tier school election results by roll call vote, ayes, clues, Bosch, Rassinsen, Luke, and Ellis, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-two duly passing through and reads as follows. That for the second tier that shows when we got the certification from the other. Motion by Ellis and second by Luke to approve resolution twenty twenty-five X thirty-three for the certification of city of Belmont Public Measure. By roll call vote, ayes, plus Bosch, Rassinsen, Luke, and Ellis, nays, none. Resolution twenty twenty-five. Duly passes and reads as follows. And there you can see that um the Belmont Public Measure passed with a yes. Adam, right county, and here discussed maintenance activities inside of city limits. A small town made a request to not plow the town with a dump truck and to use a pickup truck with a blade instead. Clements contacted the Iowa DOT to see if he is allowed or able to do anything within city limits. With a population over twenty-five hundred, there is no maintenance done by this by the secondary roads department. A population under twenty-five hundred is acceptable to do maintenance within city limits, but secondary roads must be reimbursed at an actual rate. Clements talked with great party, I can't teach it, and it was discussed that right party is liable for routes when maintenance is done within the city limits. Clements will contact the Iowa DOT to clarify on the reimbursement rate and talk with the cities about no maintenance allowed to be done in the city limits until there is an agreement put in place. Clements presented resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four for the county five-year program version zero point one. This is a B R project on the four-corner bridge number one seventy-five. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four by roll call vote, ayes, clues, Bosch, Rassinsen, Luke, and Ellis, nays, none. If resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four duly passes and reads as follows, and then you can see that resolution. Clements give an update on the secondary roads permit. Please discuss a letter from the heart of Iowa Regional Housing Trust Fund. Asking for contribution of three thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars additional from what the county contributes of thirteen thousand and thirty dollars. There has been ninety thousand dollars utilized in Wright County from this program. This is recommended that the supervisors support this and pay additional funds requested. Motion by Cluse and second by Ellis to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Thank you. Plans have been around. Open forum for the public input.
We're just wondering on this city maintenance thing. Is it brought to our attention that we're responsible for darn near mile out of town on gravels and uh stuff? And honestly, we don't have the equipment to do it. And we was just asking for a little lenient somewhere along the line that going out into the country in the snow and finding driveway and turn around there without backing in ditch is highly in almost impossible. The ditches are all full. So what we're asking or suggesting is if the county can bring the gravels all the way to town and it would say and maybe possibly some towing charges getting their vehicles out of ditch, guy drives in the ditch. Uh, just coming to town, you make a corner and back right back out of town without without bothering in town. And we would find uh we've got got a guy lined up a little bit that was that would uh come in and clean our streets with a picket flaps. And uh we were just thinking if the county could take care of gravels, there's a town would take care of the streets. So we wouldn't have this conflict of heavy trucks breaking the streets or something like that. But it would uh it would help the town very much. And we would still be in agreement to maintain your property around your bill. We do that all the time. We mow it. I poop the weeds all down in there because, you know, we gotta keep our town looking nice. And uh we're willing to do that without any compensation, just, you know, just a little courtesy of finishing up to up to the gravels. And uh and that would take a lot off our stress because, you know, we're a little town. We don't have a lot of money and we don't have a lot of people. So, you know, that taxes and all that, I mean, and we're just uh just asking, you know, we can make some kind of agreement that you guys would just go ahead and come come into town with the gravels. And so we don't have to send somebody halfway out the country and end up having call tow trucks all the time to pull them out of ditch. And we could get, uh, I'm sure we can get an agreement with this guy to come in and lay our streets for us. And that would that would take care of everything. So that's just uh, that's kind of what we're here for today is just to come to agree because, you know, we've had an agreement with with the county. It goes back a long time ago. And I'm sure it was that a handshake agreement. Uh, that if the county would may have remove the snow off the streets in the winter time that we would take care of your property, you know, the county property during summer without any charge. It would just be a a uh hand back, one hand helps the other hand without having to put up a lot of money. So, and that's what we've been operating under. We we have no problem taking care of your property. We have, you know, but uh this snow, I mean, uh, we we gotta be able to get people in and out of town. And if we can get where the gravels are taken care of, that takes a big load off us. So, I mean, uh, that's that's kind of what we're here to today is spreader, uh, present our case. And hopefully we can come to some kind of agreement that would be satisfactory to both parties and stuff.
My understanding after did you want to address?
No, go ahead.
My understanding after last week's meeting is it will require some type of a uh written agreement, um, which which I don't see any reason why we can't do it the way that you're asking, but it will need to be a written.
Yeah.
Whether that's in twenty eighty or
That's what uh
Is that in my eighty, twenty eighty maintenance agreement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we gotta do that with all the town.
Yeah.
Because Goldfield's got the same problem.
Yeah. No, we have no problem with if the agreement is signing the papers. So it's in writing. I mean, back back then, you know.
Well, it's been done for since the time.
Yeah.
Right county start.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I guess when I left here last Monday, I was with the agreement that we were going to be status quo until we get these agreements in line. It doesn't leave a a town hanging because you don't have the equipment and it doesn't give you the time to get equipment or figure something out.
Yeah.
So I'm a little disappointed in how it all happened and how it transpired.
And honestly, we didn't need it before this big snowstorm.
Right.
I mean, we got dumped on. And it 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 settled into town. It's town, you know, there's banks are big and stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, so I mean, it's just, you know, yeah, you guys can uh, but if you take care of just coming in with the gravels, I think we could work something maybe with this uh gentleman with the plows that he can come in and get it done.
Mm-hmm.
But he needs a little time too to get over this. He's got other routes to do. So um if somehow we could get something in there just to, I mean, if they just make a pass down through the streets, just so people can can get out onto the street and and because
Everybody works.
Well, everybody works. We have some older people there and
Well, emergency vehicles.
Exactly.
A nine-one call.
Has a health problem. Uh, well, back my wife, you know, Connie, she uh uh we was coming to Clarion one because she wasn't feeling good. And we ended up having to call the ambulance. And I was stuck in a snowdrift in on Main Street. But my luck, my grandson was there. He took a shovel, scooped solid, got back to the house. And that's where the uh county sheriff and the ambulance met us. And uh I damn near lost her that day.
Mm-hmm.
So emergency vehicles and access is is a vital organ for any town, any place really.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's uh, I just want, I just want us to all get uh work together as a as a county and and stuff. And I mean, I've I was born here, I was raised here, and I don't honestly want to live anyplace else. But, you know, I I'm sorry to say, but this this country is really getting ripped apart. And we need, we need to come together as a country and 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 try and get back to a no uh halfway normal country again. That's not because we we got so powerful. It's because we use a country to work together, not ripping each other apart.
Yeah. I agree.
And it's too bad handshake agreements don't work anymore.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, exactly.
Because I I think that's what this was with Galt. I think it was back when Gene Sturgeon was supervisor. So it's probably been, what, fifty years ago?
It had to be reserved, yeah. But I mean, that's, you know, and but you're right. We today, you gotta have written in writing so that somebody argues, it's right there in black and white. And, you know, if it's an agreement we all agree on, I have no problem signing it. So that's kind of our case we're going to put to the supervisor this morning.
Oh. Noted.
Thank you. Does he need to state his name?
Yeah, if you just say your name for the record.
Steve James, Nate Mayor Bill.
I just yeah, you got me that on there.
Sorry.
Just to go back. I know, but
And I know we'll be getting twenty eighty agreements for all the cities.
That are under twenty-five hundred.
Yes.
Yeah. And the other gentleman that spoke is Weeks.
Yeah.
Josh.
Josh.
Anything else?
Um, I don't. That's all I can think.
Yeah, that's just our concerns.
Yeah, I I understand.
Run status quo then until we get to twenty eighty agreement. Adam?
That was not the, that was not the understanding that when I left this room last week, you guys asked me to call each town and let them know that this was happening. And I did that on Monday. Contacted all of them, sent them all emails.
Mm-hmm.
And I asked the people that were here last week, they're, that was their understanding too, that it wasn't going to be status quo.
Right. I was gonna mention that.
So the question is, can we go back to status quo?
I don't think legally we can.
Legally, we can.
So were you able to get?
I did talk to the county, the DOT about the reimbursement, that it, the law states that we can only spend certain things on that we can spend spend certain things on or spend money for secondary roads on certain things. Doesn't allow us to spend money inside of such a city. So that means we have to be fully reimbursed.
And so and where does that, what law is that?
Three thirty-one point four two nine.
Didn't you mention though, Adam, something about a city being under a certain
Yeah, they they, yeah, yeah. Under twenty-five hundred, we can spend money, but we have to be reimbursed.
Mm-hmm. And how much uh farm-to-market monies do you get for the town of Galt? Is there a farm-to-market road?
Uh, let me get that on that specific.
There used to be a grain elevator there.
Correct, but it's just the diagonal route that we get money for.
Well, in Goldfield, there's a farm-to-market route too, but the city gets some money for that farm-to-market route.
They're over Because they're over five hundred. But under five hundred.
He said that last week it was Rowan, Woolstock, and
Galt.
Galt.
That they got stuff.
And we'll still maintain those rounds because we get the FM farm-to-market funds for it.
Mm-hmm.
It's the rest of the routes we don't get.
Right.
In service.
I just didn't know
Yeah.
which ones.
Oh, yeah, it's R fifty-nine. Yeah, that diagonal that goes through town. I guess it's kind of parallel with the railroad tracks.
Okay.
Yeah. That's the old farm-to-market identified.
Okay, I didn't know the one going from the stop sign going
North.
North. It surprises me.
Don't know where it would, because the FM system has to be contiguous. So I don't know where it would connect.
Gotcha. On the gravel, yeah.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
So does the twenty-eight E come from you or come from us or?
I'll create it and I'll work with county attorney to make sure everything's stated in there and then we'll get it through you guys and um go from there.
Sound good?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Just thank you guys for
And hope hope that we don't get any worse than all that.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I mean.
It was, that's a short notice. You get less than a week to give you
Yeah.
A plan.
That's what made it so hard.
Yeah.
It's kind of like our sign, real town won't die.
You fight like hell.
You're not giving up to the last thread, right?
That's right.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Feel like a pistol, root like the end.
Yeah.
But, okay, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you very much. You guys have a wonderful day.
Yeah.
Alright, your day Josh. Bye-bye.
Okay, now we have the library association to give a annual update.
Yeah. You prefer that I sit here?
Yes, watch your knees when you get in.
One. Okay. I'm Josephine Miller. I'm the Rowan Public Library Director. I'm here to speak on behalf of all the directors, all the libraries in Wright County. Uh, we came together in November. We talked about what we wanted to ask you guys. Um, my favorite part, other than, you know, the money, but um, my favorite part is to ask everybody like, what's going on? What are you guys doing to keep people in? What are you doing to stay relevant? Um, Clarion did a great summer reading program. Rowan, we tried to do things that weren't um, your normal programs in the libraries and like we carve pumpkins. And if you know, that is super messy, but we did it. It was fun, you know? Um, and then Belmont, they focused on um doing things outside of the library. So they did a lot of programs outside of it. And I thought that was really cool. Um Dow's um did like a pizza party. So they were feeding people, but they were also um, you know, connecting with their group. And I thought that was really fun. Um, yeah, so in Evil Grove, they did uh like community. Um, I think it was like a candy craft was the deal with them. Um, and I thought that was really, really fun. Um, but we aren't just for the people in town. We also um help the people that are rural. One library card can get you into all the libraries. We have the same system. One library card, you can come here, there, wherever. We'll ship them back. We'll give you whatever you want. Um, but we also do, you know, um we use the copier. We let people use the copier machines, laminator. Um, we just got a book repairing machine at Rowan. So we'll offer that as well, you know, um instead of throwing away books, we can repair the ones we have um and not constantly spending the money on the most loved ones, you know? Um, so with that, that's a lot. Um, with that, we are asking for three percent and a five thousand dollar tech grant. So a thousand for each of us is what we're asking. I covered that all. I write something down and then I can't read it. I have to, yeah, so that's what I got.
Um, I know the tech grant's very important to all of you because
Yeah.
um, you know, computers, they they don't last forever.
No, yeah, yeah. They, yeah, we're constantly having to update, make those.
Make improvements.
Yes, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I have been in some of your libraries. I happened to stop.
Yes, you did.
At Dow's and surprise visit.
Oh, yeah.
And it's pretty awesome in there. And there was a number of people in there.
In Rowan or Dow?
Rowan, Rowan.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
But it's pretty, it's, I was, I'd never really been in there. I didn't know what they had, but they had quite a lot going on.
Yeah, which anytime, anytime you guys want to swing on by, I'll give you the full tour.
And my hat goes off to all you librarians because I got kicked out of the library when I was younger all the time. I don't know why.
Why?
Something about being quiet.
Uh, be, yeah, we're, at least in Rowan, I'm trying to kick that stereotype. I don't necessarily want the library to be, I want people to be able to focus when they need to. But after school, kids want to be rough and rowdy, and that's totally cool. And we do activities that allow that for them to be fun. And um then that keeps them coming back too.
So it is nice in Rowan that you have the community center attached.
Yeah.
Be messy.
Yes, yeah, 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 that's, that's
Yeah, I've never been in it. It was pretty awesome. I thought for a small town.
Thank you.
We're very fortunate Belmont to have the telestory along the trail system and it's
Yeah.
all of the time.
Hey, that being said, we will take note of this when we do our uh annual budgeting for everybody for the coming year.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
Adam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, last week we approved that amendment to the five-year program. Um, I'm bringing you the final plans for that specific project today. Four-corner bridge uh al-also named as B R O S C O ninety-nine, Karen one oh eight, A J ninety-nine. Um, I was mistaken last week. It is not a ten by eight from the question from Betty. It is a fourteen by twelve uh twin box culvert. So it still will be a structure. It would have been on a ten by eight anyway, but over twenty twenty feet. So from outside a box to outside a box going parallel with the road. Um, so we will expect this to be let in at the DOT March seventeenth. Um, as of last week, we have a uh estimated budget on our program of six hundred thousand. And I have the engineer's estimate, obviously confidential before you guys, so.
So in the the drawing where it shows the original
What page, John?
Uh, page two, excuse me, B one.
B one.
B one. Um, lower left-hand corner of that drawing, uh, obviously you don't put dirt inside of the box. That's just showing where's where the placement of the box is in in the current condition.
Correct, that's the excavator. So if you look on the lower left of that, it says class twenty excavation.
Yep.
Replace the special back them.
Okay, alright. It'll just be black filled up to the side.
Yep.
Then what do you do uh at the end? I mean, you you don't want to drop off, you don't
So we actually put riprap in the on the on the ends. Um, but the ends actually get uh one side of this because we have room. If you look on page D one, which is the last page. So southwest corner um is getting an end section, three men, plus also getting riprap at the end uh on the outlet. So it just doesn't drop off. The northeast corner, we're not putting an end section on. We're going to put um sheet pile in and kind of make our own uh uh head wall uh for that because it comes in on a weird angle like that. So we're gonna, we're gonna use that um uh savings there to put a little bit more sheetrock in and a little more riprap. Or sheet, not sheetrock, sheet pile, cheese.
But where?
It's been thirteen
We're building that.
In in severe flood conditions, did that bridge, was it, or any of the roads swamped around it? No, that's always, okay, very good.
Which way does the water flow? Does it go south or?
South, yeah, so.
I would uh make a motion to approve a final plan for B R O S dash C zero, county ninety-nine, uh parentheses one oh eight dash dash A Juliet dash ninety twenty, uh plans as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes?
And and you have already gone through and reviewed these?
Yes, yep, yeah.
You need two sets of savings?
Nope, this one.
This one. And you want the
Box.
I can just I'm not that important.
Oh, thank you.
Can we use for like
If you don't want them, I'll take the extra plan set because we'll give them to the contractor when we, if you want to leave that. So
I wrote on it.
Fine. Usually it's in the upper left-hand corner.
Ah.
Righty-date. There you go, so. You don't want them, I'll take them. If you do
I'm reading it night.
Take some paper.
So uh, obviously that's a Tepica Shiner um uh that you have to deal with in um so if they start, if it's left and they start, do they quit or they just can't be digging around?
Can't do anything inside a stream.
Gotcha.
So what the what the Tepica Shiner has an issue with is the cloudiness of the water and silt. So um during that time period, they cannot disturb any of that area.
Thank you.
So update on uh three-year old activity. Uh, last week, lighting regular districts installed snow equipment on the um motor graders, load granular routes, installed snow equipment on cool trucks. Uh, four work orders were completed. Um, you'll start seeing those die off, obviously, because we got a lot of snow and are already frozen. Only update, um, one, one spot that we didn't get done was five forty-six is sixty-six percent complete, but um we'll review it after he wings back the snow today, see how much was taken uh taken down. So if anything was false there, uh should be, a lot of that should be taken out with the wing as he's winged today, so. Um, but we'll make sure. Taylor Avenue Bridge, uh, they did get the uh sheet pile out last week. Uh, they had Henninger come in and help out. Um, they had a crane, two excavators on each thing and pulled it right out. So um, seismic testing, um, they have been doing uh their dirt work out at one hundred ninetieth and putting it in their entrance. So we've been working with them. Yeah, so working with them on that. Uh, we received more salt. And then obviously, we had our winter storm event on Saturday. Uh, and then Sundays will be on next reports. So um all personnel were out on uh heart services all day on Saturday, so.
Um, last week, I I didn't get past the Dow shed. You you said you poured concrete at the Dow shed.
I didn't even check on that. I will make sure to check on that.
And I didn't see um anything in the claims that was paid.
Yeah.
So
Yeah, let me double check on that. Pretty much all checks. Tech name right away.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Thank you. Any old business? New business?
Um, Adam, I would like to set up an appointment with you if you're available sometime today.
I have a safety meeting after this, but yeah, again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just send me a text as to when you're done with your safety meeting and then
Update on meetings.
We have uh yesterday two supervisors meeting on Thursday in Mason City and on Friday the I D D A meeting.
In Fort Dodge.
In Fort Dodge.
At the old starlight.
Correct.
I don't know what it's called now.
Crossroads.
I do, right.
Do we need to send out a check against for that? We just have to, okay. You do a resolution that allows you
Or will be killed. That's actually the third, isn't it?
At three o'clock. Yeah, the can, that's correct.
Just
At three o'clock. But um
Which would be
And I'm assuming Sandy had that. I know she had a flyer out. That's open to the public. That's not just for
Yeah.
Uh, or public officials.
Anything else before the board?
Uh, that is a letter that we received that I passed on to uh economic development and also um, but it was been passed on to Jerika. It's an outfit that uh applies for federal grants and
Okay.
I'm assuming that there's some cost associated with it. Most people don't do things right for any, they make the
Mr. Chairman, um, that concrete that was poured, it was outside in front of one of the garage doors. It was beat up pretty good. So we formed it and poured it ourselves, just haven't got the bill yet for the concrete. So
Gotcha.
I said, I apologize for not getting connected around that, so.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anything else?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? We'll be in five-minute recess before our drainage trustees hats go on.
Good, you're live again.
Okay, we're back online as uh, drainage trustees, I need approval of the tentative agenda.
Most true, great.
Second to that, all in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Uh, minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Uh, November twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage districts, the following members present. Rasmussen, Cluse, Luke, Bosch, and Ellis, also present were Amanda Meyer, Auditor, and Courtney Morris, Drainage Administrator. Chairman Rasmussen called the meeting to order at nine fifty A M. Motion by Luke and seconded by Cluse to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meeting on November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. Motion by Bosch and seconded by Cluse to approve drainage transfer payment. There were no work orders needing approval, Morris presented the following two drained invoices. They're both for Moddam Construction, first one for D D thirty-six, section twenty-nine of Lake Township for four thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Second one was for D D thirty-six, section thirty-five of Norway Township for fifteen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents. Discussion took place on the J D D one eleven dash three petition to establish existing private tile as district tile. That's an estimate from Henninger's Construction to televise the six thousand three hundred and sixty feet of tile in sections one, two, eleven, and twelve of Iowa Township. The estimate was thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and does not include jetting as they expect the tile to be cleaned for as new as it is. The trustees requested to add to the next meeting agenda the setting of a date and time for an informational meeting with the landowners in Iowa Township, section one, two, eleven, and twelve. Motion by Bosch and seconded by Cluse to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they stand approved as read. Drainage claims.
We have the two claims, uh, for Moddam Construction, that total nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes? Open forum for the public input regarding drainage districts. Review and act on drainage work orders.
We have one work order that came in, this is for Betty, for D D forty and section fifteen of Blaine Township. This was reported by Dustin Hayes. Uh, it's reported as a blowout, the top of a thirty-inch tile has collapsed, creating a sepple in the field. He did provide GPS coordinates and sent this in electronically, he did not provide per default preference on the contractor.
Uh, review and sign any open, open drainage invoices.
Have four invoices. The first one is for Henninger Construction. This is for D D two oh eight and section twenty-seven of Boone Township. This came in at one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The next one is for Nymaster, our drainage attorney. And this came in for four hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And this is for his work with D D one ninety-four laterals and reviewing documents. The next one is for Henninger Construction, for D D thirty-six lateral B, section fifteen of Lake Township. This came in at two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars. And the last one is for Henninger Construction, for D D thirty-six lateral B, section fifteen of Lake Township. For two thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars as well. And they are two different areas.
Right, I saw that. One was on the north side, one was on the south side.
That was one that Andersons were supposed to do, and they didn't correct yet it down.
Yep.
And we don't need approval on that.
And those all, no, but they all got signed, did they?
I haven't looked through those folders that came back upstairs yet.
Okay.
I signed it.
Yeah, I signed mine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Uh, J D D one eleven dash three, set date and time for informational landowner meeting on December fifteenth. Two thousand twenty-five at ten o'clock.
This is what we had discussed last week, um, with that estimate for the televising. And it was decided to have an informational landowner meeting, so this is putting it on the agenda so you guys can make that motion.
And again, just to make sure that we're all clear about this, the, the cost of the televising would be borne by the petitioners. That have petitioned to have this added as a district asset.
Yes.
Is that, that's correct?
Yes.
But then I think it was also to ask the rest of the landowners if they wanted this to be included in their district.
No, because I think, no, cuz we're not asking everyone in the district, we're not, we're not sending out invitations. To all of the D D one eleven dash three landowners. We have a previous engineer's report that shows a watershed boundary. Um, if you were going to do an individual classification. If you added that in, and, and those are the landowners that we've.
Sending to.
Are sending to.
You have a sample letter?
Yeah.
Um.
I didn't know what you had, how in-depth you were trying to explain it in the letter to get lander, landlords to come.
So, that was my question, was, so, the landowners are gonna go, well, if this is paid for by the petitioners, why would I object to? To having this televised?
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I think that the idea behind. Um, inviting these people to informational meeting is, we're saying to them. If we accept, if we approve your petition to make this part of a district asset. You people will be the ones who pay for any repairs done to this portion. Because it will require us to do a separate classification on this portion. Am I saying that correctly or not?
Yeah, there'll be a separate classification, it'll be a district.
You just have to figure it out, you can board over here.
Well, cuz it, the classification was.
For the lateral.
Yes.
For that lateral, yeah, it would become, it already is a lateral, lateral A, and it's only like fifty feet or something like that.
Yeah, it's labeled as its own lateral, they just don't have their own classification anyhow, so you would have to redo the main one too, though. To take the lateral.
That is correct, the main would, the main would also.
It, it would not.
And then that would cost the whole.
You would have to, you wouldn't have to do the, the main, that, no, cuz that's not gonna change any, uh, it's not gonna change any of the water flow or any of the, anything.
All landowners, any of the laterals, no, any of the laterals will also be in the main. Everybody in the district is in the main, yes, so the lateral would be assessed twice, possibly.
Yeah, they should have an outlet fee into the main. Would be my thought.
But I, that's not how many of them are set up.
No.
No.
It's district to district, not laterals to.
Okay, okay. So it'd be a separate classification for this new lateral. Well, this extended lateral, it's already a lateral without a classification.
I think it's five, isn't it, lateral five?
Yes.
And that's, that's why we are only sending the invitation to people in eleven, twelve.
One to eleven, twelve.
Yeah, one to eleven, twelve, okay. Got, I'm clear now.
Basically, to see if they wanna spend that kind of money for the.
It's the petitioners that are spending the money on it right now. The rest of the landowners are being involved in that area and being invited in, because any future repairs and everything would then be assessed to all landowners.
And would that televise, it'd be assessed to all the landowners?
No, only to the petitioners, that would be my sale to the people in attendance. Why, if you're petitioning to have this added as a district asset. And you people who are sitting here are the ones who are gonna pay for any repairs done to that. And you're gonna pay for a classification to be done by an engineer, why do you want to spend?
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-some thousand dollars to have it televised? It's, it's almost like you're gonna be paying for the repairs anyway if we have to do a repair.
I think the televising, if I understood correctly, was to see what. Oh, to see what the um, actual tile looks like, if it's in disrepair. You may not, they may not want to take it in as a district asset, if it's in good condition, then we know where we're at.
Yeah.
As to what condition, is that the way?
Yes.
And, and that we want to take on a good asset, not a broken asset.
Okay, alright.
Jay, you wanna set that date quick, that, approve that?
Yeah, motion to approve, uh, setting the date at December fifteenth at ten A M, uh, on the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
All ayes? Okay, it's nine forty-five, we'll be on a conference call with Franklin County on a work order. For J D C one eighteen dash four, main tile.
Are we, uh?
Yep.
Oh.
Morning.
Morning, can you hear us?
Yep.
Good morning.
I was spacing off, I thought we didn't start till ten, so I'm telling stories.
Okay, all five supervisors are here, Betty, uh, Lynch, Rick. And Ashley and Dean, and Courtney, our drainage, uh.
Administrator. Administrator.
Administrator, and our Amanda, our, uh, I got, I'm screwed up today, our auditor. And that's all that's here.
Yeah, we have Luke and Smire, McVicker, and myself, supervisors, uh, Colette, Prunes, and Auditor Flint are in attendance. Yeah, I guess the main thing is, uh, you know, we just need to discuss whether you even need to be involved, is uh, that four one one eight, uh, the. From where the bulkhead begins on the new drainage district, and we knew this, you know, the public was aware of this prior, but. Uh, you know, that tile coming into that ditch is still in pretty bad shape, and there was a couple. Uh, holes in the farmer's field next to that bulkhead where the tile, you know, it just basically is collapsing. Thirty-six inch main, and uh, you know, I'm guessing as we proceed, if we do go forward with this. Does this even need to involve Wright County with the decision-making?
This is a joint district, but this main is solely in Franklin County, the classification is solely Franklin. We just wanted to have it on the agenda since it is a joint district.
Right.
Just to make you guys aware, let's see.
I don't think so, as long as we get whatever action you guys take, so that we can have it in our minutes also, I think. Would satisfy us, uh, however, I was questioning, you didn't, you only have the main one listed, what about lateral? It looks like there's a problem with lateral fifteen.
That, uh, without looking at, that was also repaired, that was just a small lateral, ten inch, and again, that's just Franklin County, servicing Franklin County.
Yep, yep.
Uh, so as we proceed, if we do proceed, do you just wanna, can we just uh, like email you, like our stuff? Do, or do you wanna have these types of meet, Zoom meetings? You know, I'm just trying to eliminate, if we don't have to have these every time, you know, if it doesn't really involve you, and you guys are just gonna say yes, go ahead and do it. You know, you know what I'm saying, but.
Right, uh, I'm assuming that we would say yes, and the classifications are all within Franklin County, so I see no reason why we would eject to. Any repairs done to that, did, any of the rest of you?
I agree.
And I would say you could email Courtney and she can update us.
Yep.
Yeah, and then if, if we think it's, you know, something we need to have a joint meeting on, then we can uh, always schedule that on the agendas and. Like we have in the past, so, okay. Think that's all we really needed from you, hope you guys have a good week and uh, rest of the day, so.
Yeah, you guys too.
Yep, well, maybe seeing this, you get the District Two meeting, so, but.
You bet.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, unless there's other business, motion to adjourn us, drainage trustees.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All ayes? Thank you, everybody.